Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for September 25, 2023. Tonight, we have Karen Roberts acting as deputy city clerk because Charmaine is our city clerk is not here tonight. So with that, Karen, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barstow.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Deputy Mayor, could you lead us in the flag?
Certainly, all rise, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, tonight, we have one proclamation that will be read by Councilmembers on and then accepted by Janine Thorne, the chief communications and engagement officer for the Bellevue School District.
Thank you, Mayor. What an important proclamation. Whereas all children benefit when communities take steps to make the safety of people walking and rolling a priority. And whereas physical activity and getting outdoors through activities such as walking or rolling to school can play a leading role in improving the health and well-being of children. And whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about safety when walking and rolling and the health benefits related to physical activity. And whereas walk and roll to school day in October has proven to be helpful in encouraging children to safely walk or roll to school or to the school bus and in creating and promoting local safe routes to school programs across the United States and globally. And whereas walking or rolling as modes of transportation can relieve traffic congestion and offer environmental benefits. And whereas this year's walk and roll event is coordinated by the Bellevue School Pool, a collaboration between Bellevue, King County Metro, and the Bellevue School District to encourage families and students to explore sustainable transportation options. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 4, 2023, as Bellevue School Pool Walk and Roll to School Day and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children traveling to and from school today and every day. Thanks.
There you are.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and Council. It is my honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of Dr. Kelly Aramaki and Don Dixon, our Director of Transportation. And I can't underscore the importance of the Walk to School Day. And it's a bit serendipitous for me because as a PTA parent at Artmore, I actually helped coordinate this day. So it's a lot of fun to see parents and families partake and participate with other school districts and organizations across the country. So thank you for the opportunity and the proclamation.
Thank you so much. Let's get a picture taken with you and thank you for instigating this. To approve the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to oral communications. Karen, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are eight pre-registered speakers this evening. Before I get started calling names, I need to remind the public of a few of the rules that the council has in place. The total time for oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Persons speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and if time remains, others will be called after that. The presiding officer is authorized in both of those categories to give preference to those who haven't spoken to the council within the last 60 days or who are speaking to items that will come on the agenda within the next 60 days. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and a maximum of three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Additionally, in compliance with Washington State Campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure or support or oppose a candidate for election, which would include your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Jody Alberts.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of the updates to the Wireless Communication Facilities Code amendments on behalf of the Bellevue Chamber. Over the last year and a half, I've staffed meetings between leaders in the telecom industry and the City of Bellevue. These meetings progressed and ultimately turned into a collaborative partnership between the public and private sectors. These policies before you today are a direct result of these efforts. While the current form is a number of edits away from its original version, I find that the process that got us to this point was the real success. City staff was intentional about seeking input and making policy adjustments so that the regulatory framework did not stifle needed technological advancement. It resulted in codes that industry could work with while meeting the needs of the city. From the Chamber's perspective, this is a prime example of how the business community and government should interact to bring about a positive regulatory environment for all players. I want to specifically thank Andrew Singleakis, Mark Poe, Nick Whipple, and Matthew Menard for always returning my emails and calls on all of these matters. They put in the extra time and effort consistently to patiently answer my questions and ensure good policy was ultimately implemented. I would urge the council to support the passing of these policies. Thank you for your attention to such matters that will help Bellevue to remain competitive, inclusive, and technologically advanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Gregory Bush, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Bush, can you hear me?
Speaking.
Thank you. Your time starts now.
Excellent. My name is Greg Bush. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T tonight. My company is Bush Law Firm, and I'm representing AT&amp;T for the council code updates to wireless facilities in the City of Bellevue. And our offices are in Iskwa. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. Carl Gibson, President of AT&amp;T External Affairs in Washington and Oregon, has already submitted a letter earlier today in support of the proposed code update, and I'd like to add to his support. AT&amp;T'd like to thank the city for updating its code to keep pace with the change of technology and ensure that the code achieves the city's goals while remaining workable for wireless providers to provide coverage to Bellevue residents, businesses, and first responders. We appreciate the high level of professionalism shown by the staff and everyone at the City of Bellevue. The code before you tonight has been through several rounds of detailed review, as mentioned by the Chamber, and staff has listened to our comments throughout. We at AT&amp;T support and opt in the code as drafted. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and the opportunity to keep providing services in the City of Bellevue.
Our next speaker on the list is Azmina Hasham.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, esteemed council, esteemed city staff, City Manager Miyake. My name is Azmina Hasham, and I am with Verizon State Government Affairs. I am also chair of the Bellevue Chamber's 5G Small Wireless Facility Work Group. I want to express our work group's support for the proposed amendments to the Wireless Land Use Code and the Small Wireless Facility Code. For the past three years, as part of the Bellevue Chamber's 5G SWIFT Work Group, the wireless industry and wireless infrastructure providers have been working with city staff on the deployment of 5G and small cells in the city and specifically on city-owned poles. During this time, the industry met every month and provided the city with feedback via the Chamber and directly to the city via quarterly meetings. The first 18 months were challenging, but eventually, we established a collaborative working relationship as all the stakeholders developed a deeper understanding of the technology and the city's requirements. The updated SWIFT code is a reflection of the joint effort between the city and the industry. And two weeks ago, we also jointly celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony the first 5G Small Wireless Facility deployed in Bellevue. 5G is deployed on both cell towers and utility or light poles. The cell towers provide 5G broad coverage, while small wireless facilities on utility and light poles enable us to target high-demand situations, for example, when residents and visitors congregate for the snowflake parade during the holiday season. The Wireless Land Use Code is being updated after almost 20 years, again with input from the industry. As a result, we are confident that it is flexible enough to meet the requirements of 5G wireless and future wireless communications. The use of wireless networks is growing exponentially in the City of Bellevue as the city grows. And it was with great foresight that the council made 5G a priority. We are also grateful to the Bellevue Chamber for providing collaboration space and for tirelessly promoting joint success for the industry and the city. And finally, we are grateful for the time the staff has spent with us to understand the technology, the requirements in Bellevue. And while it took us a while to get here, in the end, I commend the leadership displayed all around, including the willingness to learn, collaborate, and lead in this wonderful city. We do support the amendments to both the codes. Thank you.
And so that's three in favor. So that's all we can hear on that. But we have other topics.
Our next speaker on the list is Serkan Kettenci, who is also joining us virtually. Mr. Kettenci, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Serkan Kettenci. I'm a dad of two kids, their six-year-old and eight-year-old. I want to talk about the proclamation that was announced today for the walk to school. I'm living close to Spirit Beach Elementary, which is 0.2 miles away, and me and my kids are not feeling safe to walk to school, lack of sidewalks, lack of the school area speed lounge. And I raised my concerns with the city almost like a month ago. There was no progress on the issue. And I came here today that I think that the proclamation is a great idea, and one day a year, we can probably provide with the support of the police force safely to walk to school, and a lot of parents volunteering. I think it's a great intention, but I encourage the council members to kind of deeply analyze why this is not happening every day. And I also would like to ask, what are the metrics that we are measuring the success of this event, and what are we improving from this year compared to past year, the year before? I'm personally, like, living in this area for a long time, and I don't see improvements on the safety even when it comes to walking to schools. There are no improvements in the area that I can observe, or I've been doing different parts, really, about sidewalks or safety of the drivers and enough that. And I think that while we are doing this kind of great events, we can also think about a little bit how we are improving walking to school and how we are measuring on an ongoing basis how the parents are feeling about making kids walk and bike to school. And with the lack of all these analyses and in-depth thinking, I think that these events are just like with intentions, and I would hope that every city would actually think deeper in this issue and actually take this issue as a whole and try to measure some improvements from each year. Thanks very much for listening.
She's in the middle of a Safe Routes to School program that we actually have a levy that funds. Maybe we can get back to Mr. Kettenci on the progress where we are with that.
Sure, Mayor. We will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker on the list is Joe Kuntzler, who is also joining us virtually. Mr. Kuntzler, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now.
Thank you so much for your work, and it's a great privilege and honor to address the Bellevue City Council again. I rise tonight in regard to a public disclosure commission case and the hope that you will intervene in that matter. I will give you the number in a second, but I want to start by saying I want to thank this mayor for the way you've administrated the meetings lately. I don't like to testify at every meeting. I don't think it's good public comment practice to testify at every meeting, but I think because I think when you testify, you should be on something that's relevant to the community and the situation. And in the case of 136406, I've emailed some of you about this, or attempted to put something in public comment about this case, 136406. But we have an individual who has come before you many times, who has not paid his public disclosure commission fines in the past two years. And I don't think I'm at liberty to say his name because he's also a candidate for office this time. So what I'm going to say is I ask that the city council and the mayor and the city attorney review public disclosure case 136406. You can Google that. And I consider it something to comment in the public disclosure permission before 9:30 a.m. Thursday. This individual has treated you with a lot of disrespect that I find abominable, and the way your mayor has stepped up to handle this is nothing short of, in my biased opinion, and I could be wrong, Ukrainian, noble, strong, courageous, the right stuff. And I will stop there. Thank you for your time this evening. And again, the PDC case number is 136406. Thank you.
Our next speaker on the list is Patrick Seth Yanethan.
Good evening to the City Council. This is the individual who's been complaining about the lack of accountability in the Bellevue Police Department. Today's example, I shall mention a case that happened last year. In from May to July of 2022, two designated crisis responders, they are part of the health system, DSHS, Melinda Asagawa and Branda Brake, committed a series of violations of the provisions of the ITA in order to get me psychiatrically evaluated. In early July, they showed up one day outside my home with a bunch of policemen, an ambulance, a gurney with its straps open, and they knocked on my door and they said, "Get on the thing. We want to evaluate you." Excuse me, my voice is getting a little tremly, but never mind. So subsequently, of course, I did not open the door because if I had, the police would have grabbed me, bad things would have happened, but they did. So the very next day, the DCRs got a petition through the MHC and got a warrant for my arrest to have me evaluated involuntarily. Never mind. Eventually, I was. Then this year, I filed a criminal complaint against the two DCRs, mentioning every provision of the ITA they had violated. This was filed away by two police officers in the Bellevue Police Department, Officer Kidd and Baptiste, as informational inactive with a brief comment to the effect that complainant was mad about all the things that happened to him. Yes, the complainant was mad. It made no mention of any investigations of the violations of the ITA committed by the DCRs. So I filed a complaint against Kidd, and eventually, I get the usual response, which says, "All the actions of the officers were within department policy. They were lawful under the laws of Washington State." They were not. There's no mention of my original complaint against the DCR. That has been buried away. It's been filed away. Are you concerned about that? Yes, I am. That was my original complaint. What happened to it? It's been filed away. Don't worry. And I think I shall stop there. Fine. Thank you for your attention. This is the individual who's been complaining about the BPD.
Our next speaker on the list tonight is Al Rosenthal.
Thank you for your time. I'm leaving a document with each of you that questions additional CO2 causing runaway global warming. The reason I made this document is that questioning runaway global warming due to CO2 could never be made in a convincing way in a three-minute speech. The document uses data from the Burke Museum, NOAA, Forbes, and various geological professors. I would love to sit down with any one of you or any city committee for about 45 minutes or more to explain the document and answer any questions. I was on the Redmond 2015 homeless task force. The reason I was on the 14-person task force is the mayor allowed the Redmond Police Department to put two people on it that would be in opposition to the mayor's views and the people that he was putting on it. Not allowing the other side of an argument be made is like having a criminal trial with only an attorney for the prosecution, not the defense, which is what is happening in the City of Bellevue right now with climate change. I'm very well-versed in the document I left with you. I was a structural engineer for the aircraft industry for 38 years. I know how to look at data and analyze it. I may not be a quote-unquote "climate change scientist," but the data, you don't have to be a scientist to look at the data and understand it and analyze it. I spent a long time putting this document together. Please, don't write me off as a denier. Take five minutes, 10 minutes, and after that, if you want to take more, look more. But it's well put together and is a very good argument for CO2 not causing runaway global warming. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you. Zihail, my dirty, damn Nazi fascist, mafia bandita who support Iranian Muslim and Russian terrorists. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I lived in Bellevue for 35 years. Yeah, I want to speak right now on new decision what is made this council, why I call them a Nazi. They make new restriction of freedom of speech so citizens cannot speak about problem what as we have in Bellevue. We can speak only about problem what they want. This restriction number 6752, I speak right now to everybody. Another cut of freedom of speech. Another hate America in American citizen. Look who here is exactly what as we have for many years, and nothing changed. You all identical. And you people will become probably in this chamber today, tomorrow, next year, next five years, will be exactly same because 150,000 idiot who live in this city, very quiet, scared. This exactly happened. I call them a slave or happy cow. This exactly what's happened. Right now, a little bit about my experience. Right now, for last couple months, they closed door, many Bellevue businesses, Chamber of Commerce, for example, yeah, closed doors, I cannot present in meeting and forum. It's very interesting, and I try and understand why it's going on. I speak honestly, or maybe a little bit all stupid man, but everything what as I speak is honest, is a fact. So why they scared invite me, and close door when I want come? Yeah, I don't understand why it's going on, guys. Why everybody give me so many trespasses? For what? What does I talk wrong right now? Everything what as I talk right now is a book. You can find this black and white in every places. You understand about I talking? Guys, I speak right now to everybody who listen to me. Before we not clean this dirty chamber from this bandita who make us life miserable, nothing will be changed. Believe me, first time I speak in Bellevue in 1996, 1996, and for 30 years, nothing changed. We always, they always not care about people. Don't care about who are you. They not care about small, big, left, light, black, white color. They not care about this. Their goal, only personal, personal interest. That's it. This exactly what as we have problem. For this, I support Donald Trump. If my Trump talk about these people straight, say, "I, we take you," and first, great. Stand up, America. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered list of speakers this evening. At this point, I will ask if there is anyone else in the council chambers or online that would like to speak. If you are online, please use the raise hand function.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're on to the report of our city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Mayor and councilmembers, I have one item under the manager's report this evening. It is a good news item. As council knows, summer is a very busy time for the Parks and Community Services Department. We wanted to give you a brief overview of what transpired during the summer before we get too far into fall. So joining us this evening for a brief presentation are Shelley Brittingham, Assistant Director, and Brad Bennett, Program Manager, both from the Parks and Community Services Department. With that, I'll hand it over to you, Shelley.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and Councilmembers. I'm Shelley Brittingham, and with me tonight is Brad Bennett, our Parks and Community Services Manager. Brad has oversight of enterprise and recreation programs, including the Aquatic Center, Scheduling Office, community centers, and youth health and fitness programs. We're happy to be here tonight to share highlights of our 2023 programs, activities, and events. Summer sees high use in our park system, especially activities or programs taking place outdoors in our parks, on our trails, and in our natural areas. Our park rangers are an integral part of keeping our visitors safe and happy. This summer, rangers interacted with over 62,000 visitors, providing regular ranger presence and assistance, outreach, and education about Bellevue's natural environment. Rangers were on patrol seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. Our Scheduling Office reserved parks and fields for a variety of uses, including picnics, birthday parties, small and large events, outdoor classes, day camps, and trail uses. Our staff worked with community members, nonprofit organizations, and corporate businesses to schedule 875 eventual individual events and 2,034 athletic field reservations taking place Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend.
The five busiest of Bellevue's six beach parks were staffed with lifeguards from mid-June through Labor Day. These parks included Maidenbauer Bay, Newcastle, Annaphe, Chisholm, and Clyde Beach Parks. We hired 48 lifeguards this year to help keep park patrons safe in the swim areas. It's estimated that over 48,000 visitors, individuals, visited our beach parks this summer during lifeguarded hours, up from 34,000 in 2022. There were 5,300 preventative actions. That's when a lifeguard enforces a water safety rule or prevents unsafe behavior. While that number sounds high, there were only 10 rescues and zero fatal drownings. REI operated another successful kayak and stand-up paddleboard rental and tour program this summer out of the Maidenbauer Bay and Annaphe Beach Park boathouses. Our dedicated and passionate staff assembled a diverse suite of 250 half- and full-day camps, some with extended care, were offered at the community centers and parks throughout the city for 10 weeks this summer that met the diverse needs, interests, and ages of our youth. A few of the enrichment camps offered were GoGo. to schedule 875 eventual individual events and 2,034 athletic field reservations taking place Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend.
The five busiest of Bellevue's six beach parks were staffed with lifeguards from mid-June through Labor Day. These parks included Maidenbauer Bay, Newcastle, Annaphe, Chisholm, and Clyde Beach Parks. We hired 48 lifeguards this year to help keep park patrons safe in the swim areas. It's estimated that over 48,000 visitors, individuals, visited our beach parks this summer during lifeguarded hours, up from 34,000 in 2022. There were 5,300 preventative actions. That's when a lifeguard enforces a water safety rule or prevents unsafe behavior. While that number sounds high, there were only 10 rescues and zero fatal drownings. REI operated another successful kayak and stand-up paddleboard rental and tour program this summer out of the Maidenbauer Bay and Annaphe Beach Park boathouses. Our dedicated and passionate staff assembled a diverse suite of 250 half and full day camps, some with extended care, were offered at the community centers and parks throughout the city for 10 weeks this summer that met the diverse needs, interests, and ages of our youth. A few of the enrichment camps offered were Go-Go with Van Gogh Art Camp, Hike/Bike and Swim Camp, Frog Lakes Culinary Academy camps, and counselor and training camps to develop future staff. Nearly 3,800 camp roster spots were filled this summer, up from 2,500 last year, and that number represents over 1,350 households served. Eighty-one percent of the roster spots and 73% of households were Bellevue residents. Several small to very large city-sponsored events and community events produced by outside cultural organizations were held this summer at various park locations throughout the city, including Robbinswood Park, Bellevue Botanical Garden, Crossroads, and Downtown Parks. The numbers listed on this slide represent estimated attendance. As noted, several cultural events happened this summer. In its second year, the Chime Music Festival highlights Chinese culture and music. All event organizers, including city-sponsored events, work with a special events committee made up of department representatives who set conditions to help ensure successful outcomes.
We hope you had the opportunity to spend time in Bellevue's parks this summer, whether walking on trails, swimming at one of our beach parks, having a family picnic, or attending a special event. The city's parks, beaches, trails, community centers, and amenities continue to be popular and contribute to Bellevue being a great place where people want to be. Fall has arrived, and staff are preparing for the Kelsey Creek Farm Fair on Saturday, October 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We hope you'll come and enjoy the mini-activities and meet the newest members of our farm family, Valiente the Pony and Blueberry the Rabbit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you for that presentation. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I need to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have two study session items tonight. Mr. Miyake, you want to introduce the first one, please?
Yes, Mayor and council members, the first topic relates to updating cities' regulations and codes relative to the small wireless facilities in Bellevue. Just by way of background, this is Phase Three of the city's wireless-related amendments. The first two phases enacted and clarified regulations for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and were adopted by council in 2019. As you heard from some of the speakers this evening, much work and outreach has occurred between the providers, the chambers, and the city over the past few years, leading to a recommendation that the council is receiving this evening. After tonight's presentation, staff are recommending the council consider two things. The first is enter a finding of necessity for the city to process the land use code amendment, as well as direct the staff to schedule a public hearing on the proposed wireless land use code amendment. And second, direct staff to prepare the wireless Bellevue City Code Amendment for final action at a future meeting. So joining us this evening is Liz Stedt, our Land Use Director. To her right is Caleb Miller, Senior Planner, both from the Development Services Department, and Mark Poe to Caleb's right, who is Assistant Director in the Transportation Department. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Liz.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Council. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse. We are here tonight to talk about all things wireless, and it's unique in that we are going to be covering projects that are not only a private property, but would also be in the right-of-way. So this is the third phase of a suite of amendments that started back in 2019. We're really excited especially about the land use code amendments because it's the first time we've amended that code since 2003. So a lot of technological changes and a lot of federal regulatory changes that we'll be able to put into one package. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Caleb to start us off.
All right. Thank you, Liz. So the direction we'll be seeking from council tonight comes in two parts. First, to enter a finding of necessity for council to process the LUCA, and then direct staff to schedule the public hearing on the proposed wireless LUCA. And the second part would be to prepare the wireless Bellevue City Code Amendment for final action at a future meeting. And we'll get into why that's separated out in a bit. In terms of the agenda, first, we'll provide some background, both on the existing regulatory structure for wireless facilities, both in the right-of-way and on private property, and then we'll go over the various regulatory and technological changes that have occurred over the last 20 years. Then we'll discuss the FCC orders that have come into play over the last decade or so that significantly impact how we regulate wireless facilities, as well as an overview of our objectives for both the LUCA and BCCA. Part one of the proposed changes will be, Mark here, to discuss the Small Wireless Facilities Bellevue City Code Amendment, and then part two will go over the Wireless Communication Facilities Land Use Code Amendment, and then we'll get into the review process at the end of it. And Liz, were you providing background? I can provide background, too. Okay. So by way of background, as Liz noted, this is Phase Three of the Wireless Code Amendments, with Phases One and Two adopted in 2019. These first two phases covered small wireless facilities in the right-of-way specifically and did not address the land use code, which covers facilities on private property. Those regulations were first adopted in 2003, and very few updates have been made since then, but they have been very minor in nature. No substantial changes have been done since 2003. In that time, there have also been extreme changes on the wireless facility landscape, both with new technologies as well as increased demand, as we all have smartphones in our pockets nowadays. And then there have also been limitations on local authority passed down from the Federal Communications Commission. These orders come in two parts that we're addressing with these changes. First are the shot clocks. These are time limits that the city has to review and approve or deny permits for new facilities. So you'll see on the left side of this table the different types of activities that are regulated under wireless codes. So small wireless facilities to non-small wireless facilities, and then it's also based on the attachment that they are, the structure they are attached to. So either co-located or attached to an existing structure, be it a building or a utility pole, or on a new purpose-built structure, which are referred to as towers in the FCC. Additionally, they laid out a process to review requests for modifications to existing WCFs. This is called an eligible facilities request. In order to qualify for an eligible facilities request, they cannot result in what they call a substantial change, and there are certain dimensional standards that qualify as a substantial change. If these requests do not result in this substantial change, then the city must approve them within 60 days of submission of an application, provided all the criteria are met. So overall, our objectives with both the Bellevue City Code Amendment and the Land Use Code Amendment would be to, A, respond to the new technologies such as small wireless facilities and new stealth and screening techniques that have been implemented over the last two decades. They will also adjust and streamline the permitting process, both in response to FCC orders, as well as what we've heard from wireless carriers and our outreach. And then, of course, to align with the FCC orders for eligible facilities requests and those shot clocks that we discussed. And with that, I will pass it over to Mark.
All right. Thanks, Caleb. Good evening, Council. Again, my name is Mark Poe. I am Assistant Director for Mobility Services in the Bellevue Transportation Department, and I'll be covering the proposed code amendments for Small Wireless Facilities, or SWIF for short, in the public street right-of-way. All right. I first want to start by covering what is a small wireless facility, and it's a wireless communication facility with smaller radios and antennas than the traditional cell tower. Because of its smaller size, it can be installed on a city streetlight pole, PSE wood utility pole, or even on private property. And they add wireless capacity in high-traffic areas, and they complement cell towers. They're really not meant to replace them, but add capacity and resiliency to networks, especially in dense areas like the Bellevue downtown. They're an important wireless connectivity strategy, not only for the carriers, but also for the cities, as we want to be a connected city and advance our Bellevue Smart City Plan. One of the elements of our Smart City Plan is connectivity. We accomplish that through consumer services by partnering with the carriers and also by pursuing partnerships. All right. Small wireless facilities in the public street right-of-way is regulated by the Bellevue City Code specifically, Chapter 6.08 in the telecommunications title. This code was established back in 2019. Some of you were on the council then and might remember that. That was really done for a number of reasons. One was to conform with FCC regulations that limit local control over the deployment of small wireless facilities, also to establish design criteria in terms of aesthetics and the total amount of equipment on a pole, and then also to expedite the permitting process for small wireless facilities to get it out of the land use code and make that a little easier process. I also want to talk just briefly about the current status of SWIF deployments in Bellevue. There are currently four completed in downtown Bellevue. Three permits have been issued for construction. One of those permits very close to being constructed. Fifteen sites in various stages of permit review, and then also 50 pole reservations. We allow the carriers to come in and reserve a pole for up to half a year, and this gives us a really good indication of future workload. Working relationships, this is very important. You've heard a lot about that during the oral communications, but we work very hard. The chamber works very hard, and the carriers work very hard on this. The city helps to facilitate this by having monthly meetings scheduled with Verizon, Crown Castle, and AT&amp;T. Right now, we're meeting even more frequently with Exponent, who is working with T-Mobile to begin the process of implementing small wireless facilities for T-Mobile. So we're walking them through our permitting process. They're telling us about their goals, and we're having those meetings quite frequently. Also, the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, the carriers in Bellevue have really collaborated, and again, you've heard about this already, on two main elements. One is process improvement, and you can see some of the process improvement that we've accomplished from lessons learned over the last couple of years. Won't go through all those. One I might point out is that first one, electrical access. That's a really difficult thing for the carriers, is how are they going to get electricity to these facilities? And the city happens to have a great electrical circuit downtown for all our streetlights, so we've invited them to be able to use that circuitry to get their power for their SWIFs. That's just one example of collaboration and some process improvement that we've been able to accomplish. And then the second, of course, is the proposed code amendments for this evening. I want to point out the ribbon-breaking that was alluded to earlier by Jody, I believe, with the chamber. On September 12th, we celebrated the installation of Bellevue's first small wireless facility in the downtown. That's a Verizon installation. And it not only was a celebration of a very important facility, but probably more importantly, the collaboration between the chamber, the city, and the carriers to accomplish a lot in the area of advancing connectivity in Bellevue. It's a little rainy on that day, kind of like this evening, but we got the umbrellas out. We had a great celebration, and the chamber invited us over to their facility to get dry afterwards and to have a couple hours of really good conversation. So that was great. All right. Last slide from me tonight. The proposed code amendments themselves, again, we're asking to amend the telecommunications, Chapter 6.08. You can see the areas that we're proposing to amend, areas in the, like expanding antenna and equipment placement options, enclosure options, increase the amount of time for permitting to operation, processing those eligible facility requests that Caleb mentioned, and then allowing more temporary installation options. And probably most importantly, again, here, and you've heard this already, but this is not just the city staff coming to you for these code amendments, but the chamber, the carriers, and the city staff, and these are ready to go. So we're ready to bring these back for legislation whenever you're ready to have us. So thank you very much. I'm going to turn it back over, I believe, to Caleb.
Thank you, Mark. So the next portion of our presentation will cover amendments to the land use code. The land use code covers facilities that are specifically on real property, so anything outside of the right-of-way, as well as non-small wireless facilities, so macro facilities, larger facilities are regulated under the land use code as well. So the proposed LUCA is a rewrite of Chapter 202195 of the land use code. However, although it is a rewrite, the existing standards for facility aesthetics, design, equipment screening, and tower separation are all being maintained in the draft code being presented. The main changes being proposed are related to the FCC directives for shot clocks and eligible facilities requests that we went through earlier. And then I would say the most significant changes are related to the permit procedures for citing new facilities in response to those shot clocks from the FCC. So here we have a similar table showing the different types of activities regulated under the land use code. And first, we have eligible facilities requests and modifications to existing wireless facilities that don't qualify as EFRs, and then wire facilities attached to existing structures or co-locations. All of these activities are permitted by right under the draft code. However, construction or right-of-way permits may be required. I'll also note that design, screening, and placement standards that do apply are going to be reviewed under the proposed process and building permits. For new towers and, so purpose-built structures for wireless facilities and any requests for departures from these WCF standards, an administrative conditional use permit process would apply. This would allow for public input and more careful consideration of the standalone towers and our review departures. Additionally, the LUCA does include provisions for temporary wireless facilities, which our current code does not speak to. These may be deployed in limited circumstances under the draft code, such as for emergency communications or for large events that might require additional capacity. As an overview for our review process, as Mark noted and as you've heard from commenters tonight, there's been a lot of work that has gone into these amendments between the city and carriers. And additionally, over the last two years, Mark's been working with them, and additionally over the summer, we invited carriers to provide comments on the proposed LUCA. And as we've heard tonight, we all came to an agreement on the outcome here, so we're all feeling very good about that. Following tonight's meeting, the Bellevue City Code Amendment, so the Small Wireless Facilities in the Right-of-Way amendments can be brought back for adoption at a future meeting. However, the land use code amendment does require a public hearing, so that will need to come back for a public hearing at a future meeting as well. After the public hearing, the LUCA can be adopted at any point. And so with that, just as a reminder, we are seeking council direction to enter a finding of necessity to continue processing the LUCA, and then to schedule the public hearing for the LUCA, and then to prepare the wireless Bellevue City Code Amendment for final action at a future meeting. I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, I'll start with you, Deputy Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Liz and Mark and Caleb. Thank you for all your hard work on this, and I wish Andrew was here. I thank him as well, although he probably got tired of giving me monthly updates on this all the time, but I really appreciate it. It has been a long road, but this is a topic or an issue that I had a particular interest in, so I'm really happy to see us kind of get over the finish line on this, and it was great to have the ribbon cutting despite the weather. It was still a great event. I really appreciate, as you mentioned, Mark, the collaboration between the city, the various wireless carriers, and the chamber, who played an important role in this to help keep moving this forward. I thought that was really important. I really appreciate some of the kind of lessons learned or areas where we might be able to help facilitate this even quicker going forward, which is great. I'm glad we've got four, but we've got quite a few in the pipe there to roll out in the city, and it's so important for us, too, as a city, that, you know, we like to, you know, we like to tell people how forward-thinking we are in innovation and technology. But all these things, you know, need that infrastructure. They need that wireless backbone. They need the SWIF and the 5G in order to make that happen. So I think it's really important, not just for businesses, but I think it's important for students. I think it's important for businesses here in the city, for visitors, for our first responders. There hardly is a service that we don't provide as a city that doesn't touch some type of or need some type of wireless connectivity at some point to serve all our residents. So just thrilled that we've gotten to this point. Thank you for all your hard work, and again, I really want to thank the carriers as well for hanging in there with us as we get through this process. get through this process, but thrilled with where we're at at this point. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I had some comments I was going to make, but you know, Deputy Mayor really did a good job, and I agree with that. It is fantastic, and we're really pleased to go forward. And as he said, indicated that we're really up on the new things going on. We're really engaged in things. The city is growing greatly, and this has been this piece that's kind of been a little bit behind in a sense, and you've just done a tremendous job of getting, putting it together. And we're looking forward to, there are going to be a lot of advances going forward too. So we're set to go on that, and thank you very much and appreciate it and look forward to using it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonny.
Yes, thank you. I love the slide that talks about planning for a smarter city. So exciting, because that's exactly where we've been going for a long time, and I like the fact that we're updating the land use code after 20 years. And what I heard, which is that this is going to give us the flexibility for the advancement of 5G so that hopefully we're in an even better position. And the fact that you were going slow to go fast, what I clearly heard was, one, some of the pain points to get us to this point, but that you stayed at the table and you broke through the other side, and so this is truly what a partnership looks like and collaboration. So I'm really excited about supporting this, finding of necessity, as well as scheduling the public hearing. Did I see that correctly? So there's, when I add all the math, there's over 70 of these either reservations or permitting in place, which is...
For small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, that is correct.
And are they all in downtown?
No, not necessarily all in downtown, but most of the initial deployments will be.
Okay, so as we, it moves along, it's in downtown and then it'll be in other communities as well, so that holistically, as we think about connectivity and making sure that all of the areas in Bellevue are going to be better by this as well. So I think that's great. Yeah, everything I love about it, regulatory framework plus workable solutions. So win-win. Thank you.
I'll just say, I'm excited to be moving forward on this. We've had a lot of questions of what's been taking so long, and I know it has not been easy, and I appreciate the explanation tonight. I did want to ask you, you read in the paper about some cities who are restricting the access of the small cell installations, and I wonder what's different between those cities and ours.
I'll take a stab at that. I think one thing, when we established, when you established the small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way code in 2019, you established a design criteria, and that was very much thought through both by your city staff but also by the carriers. And so there are some limitation on how big these facilities can be. There's a lot of concealment elements. There's a lot of thought put into how the final product looks. You could see that from some of the pictures tonight. The pole and the equipment are all the same color. You know, appurtenances are tight to the pole, so there's a nice aesthetic. It's still a facility with a form factor, but it's tastefully done. And I think that that's really helped our community see that these can be facilities that are not only needed and provided, but they can look good as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great job. I know that, you know, this takes a long time, you know. We've been out there for quite a while, and so I wanted to thank the providers for staying there and working with the city, because we recognize, I think the mayor has, there's some concerns, because it's a technology, you know, something different, and its appearance and interference, a lot of people don't know what it is. If we don't know what it is, you know, have questions. And I think we are a very responsible city, so we want to address those issues. But however, Bellevue is a center and a city of global technology, and I think we've always been aware of that, and we are willing to take that responsibility. So Bellevue has lots of technology, fibers, everything's laid, everything's provided. We are one of the city that has lots of provisions, infrastructure, technology. If you start doing that now, it would be so expensive, it's almost impossible, right? So I think we have the foresight, and I think now we are reaping some of the, you know, benefits of the investment that we made. I thought most people don't recognize how much money we put into technology infrastructures. I think the service public can testify to that, right? You don't have to dig up everything. So I really think that's a good thing, very good, to get, you know, ahead of the technology. One question that I was, like the mayor was asking, other cities may have some concerns, maybe because of their own inadequate, you know, admirable situation like infrastructure. We don't. Have we had the citizen review and input, because appearance, like you mentioned, how big or small, how obstrusive is the consideration? So I assume we have all along been keeping up to, you know, keeping track with our citizens, that it's, to me, when we went out there and we cut the ribbon, it's very acceptable, right? So I, have we heard anything from anybody?
I know for the small wireless and the public right-of-ways, we really have not received any complaints, and so, you know, we answer our phones, so we just haven't had any.
That's good. That's reassuring. Thank you. So we're on the right track.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move to enter a finding of necessity for the city council to process the LUCA, then direct staff to schedule a public hearing on the proposed wireless LUCA and prepare the wireless BCCA for final action at a future meeting. Second?
I wonder if we can't prepare the wireless BCCA for, to go on the consent calendar? Anybody opposed to that?
Great idea.
Okay, so let's just do a friendly amendment for that, and we've had a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We will take a 10-minute break and resume at 10:00 after. Miyaki, we have one more study session item. Could you introduce it for us, please?
Councilmembers, this last topic is a presentation on recent housing-related amendments to the 2021 King County, county-wide planning policies. And just while I weigh background, housing-related updates to the county-wide planning policies were recently approved by the King County Council. Initially, I would mention that the Bellevue City Council ratified the initial 2021 county-wide planning policies in March of 2022. So tonight's staff will review details of the process, as well as the content of the policy amendments themselves. Following the presentation, staff will be seeking council consideration to prepare legislation ratifying the housing-related amendments to the county-wide planning policies for final action at a future meeting. With that, I will, joining us at the table tonight is Michael Cotterman, who's the director and Emile King, Planning Director, both of Committee Development, and with that, I'll turn it over to you, Michael.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, members of the city council. As Mr. Miyaki said, we have a presentation tonight on some amendments to the county-wide planning policies. So what we're going to, what we're asking for from you this evening is some direction on whether you want us to come back for ratification. At this point in time in the process, the inter-local agreement that established a process for approving amendments to the county-wide planning policies, there are three possible actions for the council. One is to take no action, which is deemed ratification under the inter-local agreement. A second is to take an action to not ratify or disapprove. A third is to take action to ratify. None of these allow for any changes to the county-wide planning policies at this point in the process. It's already gone through all of that work. And staff is seeking direction to bring back a resolution to ratify before the November 30th deadline, so we have until that time for the council to make a decision. This evening, we're going to give you some background on how this aligns and has implications for our comprehensive plan update, as well as the amendments themselves, what the implications are for Bellevue, the housing needs that came out of this process, and the next steps in the process. So in terms of the alignment, the Growth Management Act establishes an overall framework and sets minimum requirements for jurisdictions that are doing planning under that act. Vision 2050 is the Puget Sound Regional Council's plan for the four county region, and that aligns with and adds to the Growth Management Act on regional growth issues and transportation planning. Underneath that are the county-wide planning policies, so for King County and the cities, and this must align with the Vision 2050 Plan as well as the Growth Management Act. And it implements these at the county level and sets some additional direction for local comprehensive plans, which we then must align with in our comprehensive plan, plus everything above that. So we're sort of fourth in the pyramid, if you will. And then our comprehensive plan establishes the direction for our land use code, our development codes, related things like that, as well as the capital investments and how, and where development occurs in the city. So the amendments themselves are an outgrowth of House Bill 1220 that was adopted by the legislature in 2021. The county-wide planning policies align with House Bill 1220, in that the cities are required to plan for and accommodate housing need. And I want to stress that phrase. That's in the state legislation. It's also echoed in the county-wide padding, excuse me, county-wide planning policies. Get that out yet. These are not required targets. These are an explanation of the need for housing at different income levels throughout the county, and we have to show that we can plan for and accommodate those. We can demonstrate through our comprehensive plan update how we can accommodate with additional capacity, a variety of housing types, and also with our policies and programs that will provide housing at different income levels. So we believe we can meet the test of planning for and accommodating as required by 1220 and the CPPs. So these amendments came out of that 2021 update of the county-wide planning policies, and it's a recognition of the new legislation that was adopted at that time, with direction that additional amendments would be required that would guide our 2024 update. So what does this mean as far as Bellevue and our comprehensive plan update? This does identify what the county-wide needs are by jurisdiction and allocates those to the various cities and unincorporated area within King County. These are housing needs, as I said, so it's really looking county-wide at what that is, and then putting those into the different buckets for the cities as we're doing our plans. It's a little different than our housing needs assessment that we did that was specific to Bellevue, and Emile is going to go into that in a little bit more detail in just a couple of minutes. So what this means for us going forward is that the county-wide planning policies establish some accountability and implementation frameworks. What that means is, before we adopt our comprehensive plan, we have to send that to the county, and the Growth Management Planning Council will review and comment on that and make some suggestions and recommendations as to how we might better meet the need for the housing within our jurisdiction. This will also require us to monitor on an annual basis. We'll provide data to King County, reporting on how much housing we've produced in each of those income areas. And the Affordable Housing Committee has been charged with establishing some benchmarks that will be used county-wide to, that we will measure our progress against. And then the county will also produce an annual report for all of the county and the cities within it to see how we're doing overall. This does align with House Bill 1220, in that it also requires a five-year assessment and review, and revisions to our plans, policies, and programs at that time, depending on how we're doing relative to those benchmarks. And that's under 1220, the state law, as well as the county-wide planning policies. And with that, I'm going to have Emile talk some more about what all the numbers are and what they mean.
So I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on the King County allocation of need for Bellevue. So this is the summary of the information that's in Table H-1, that's in your packet and part of the county-wide planning policies. To orient the council and the public, we have the different area median income brackets going from the left over to the right, starting with the 0% to 30% AMI. For a single-person household in King County, as of 2023, that equates to about $31,000 of income. The King County need showed that for Bellevue, this would be close to 18,000 housing units between 2019 and 2044. You can see as we continue to go off to the right in the 31% to 50% AMI bracket, we have a little less than 9,000 units. In the 51% to 80% AMI, about 2,800 units, 700 to 800 units in the 81% to 100, 100% to 120, and then about 4,000 units in the 120% and plus area median income. It's important to note that in Bellevue right now, a typical market rate unit, especially the apartments, are going to be in about the 120 AMI or higher. Some are coming in at about 130% AMI. And the two AMI brackets, at the 0% to 30 and 30% to 50, really do have a lot of subsidy that is needed to build those based on our experience and the experience of other cities. Some notes on the methodology that was worked through at the Affordable Housing Committee and the Growth Management Planning Council. In the methodology, King County really sought to increase housing choices for low and moderate income households in areas of the county with fewer affordable housing options currently. So that's one of the reasons why we have the fairly large number in the 0% to 30 bracket. There is also a part of the methodology that really sought to promote a more equitable distribution of housing choices across all of King County jurisdictions. So those are really the two main points of the King County methodology. I also want to note that the totals for all of these different bars do add up to our 35,000 housing units that we are planning for in our comprehensive plan process currently. There's been some questions about how Bellevue's allocation from the county relates to other eastside cities, so we took some information out of the county-wide planning policies document and just showed the percent of each jurisdiction's need as assigned by King County and how that relates to those different area median income brackets that I just talked about. So while the total housing unit numbers are clearly different for the different cities, ours is 35,000, Redmond's 20,000, Kirkland, little over 13,000, and Issaquah, 3,500. The distribution from the county is fairly similar, if you look at the different AMI brackets, with 48% to 56%, depending on the city, in that 0% to 30% AMI bracket, and then the same as we kind of go to the right of the AMI levels as well. In the calendar year 2021, the city of Bellevue used a State Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant to do our own local housing needs assessment. We did present some findings of this, both to the Planning Commission and the city council previously. In that work, we actually looked to update the previous needs assessment for Bellevue that was done in 2015, 2016 timeline, right before we adopted our affordable housing strategy in 2017. What we did in our analysis was, we went and hired a kind of a local expert in the field, Community Attributes, who does quite a bit of this work. And when we were looking at the city of Bellevue's needs, we took a look at who lives in the city and looked at the, especially the existing need of households in that 0% to 30 and 30% to 50 AMI brackets. We looked at who works in the city, especially those who might be earning in the lower end of the income spectrum. And then we also looked at who might want to move to Bellevue, and as a proxy, looked at income levels in King County as people who might consider moving to Bellevue. So that's how, at least, we derived this needs assessment for Bellevue. This, again, does add up to the 35,000 housing units that we are planning for in our comprehensive I wanted to show the previous graphic with the amounts that we were planning. So in the purple, you can see in our local Bellevue needs assessment, we had 6,800 units in that 0% to 30, around 3,600 in the 30% to 50, and then about 3,900 in the 50% to 80. And those are on top of, the blue is what was existing as of 2020. So you can see, our local needs assessment even showed that we were having a need well above the units that we have now. above the units that we have now. It showed about a matching what we had in the 30 to 50 level, and then some increases in the 50 to 80 level that showed, at least in our local need, that we didn't need as much compared to some of the other AMI brackets. Also important to note that we did look at the above 80% AMI levels and were, based on our Bellevue needs assessment, showed the need for about 21,000 units above 80% AMI compared to about 50,000 in the current housing stock as of 2020. Wanted to just give a little bit of detail on some of the Bellevue incomes that we looked at. We were using the most recent data in 2021, when we did most of this work, was 2019. So we were looking at both residents and employees. You can see those two columns there show the amount of our residents who actually are making 15,000 K per year and the amount that we're making up to that 40 K per year level, so between 15 and $40,000. So this is just an example of kind of the rigor that we took to look at who was living in the city at that point, who was working in the city and trying to make some accommodations for their housing needs. As a comparison, the 15 K and 40 K really did drive a lot of the numbers that came into our needs assessment in the finalization of it. I wanted to take a moment just to highlight briefly the affordable housing work that we have ongoing. We do come to council twice a year to give an update on all of our work that we've been doing since the Affordable Housing Strategy was adopted in 2017. So that really ramped up our efforts to actually take a more concerted approach to getting policy, code, and direct investment into affordable housing. The comprehensive plan update in Wilberton are really big milestones for the city to really be doing more work on affordable housing. And that's why we did our, both our local needs assessment, and we're looking to increase significant capacity in the city during our comp plan update. There's also direct investment that we do with the Housing Stability Program or the 1590 Funds, as well as the Arch Trust Fund. And we're also involved in a number of partnerships, both with groups like King County Housing Authority and Sound Transit to actually get units preserved or new units built in the City of Bellevue. And then the city's, or the city council's been very involved in our code and policy changes to expand opportunities on faith-based properties. There were two things that happened with C1 Phase 1 and C1 Phase 2. We also have the very successful multifamily tax exemption program that's reaping good rewards in the tax exemption for 80% AMI, and then a whole host of Next Right work items that have both been accomplished and are currently being worked on. And then just to highlight some of the milestones to pull this all together. So back in 2022, there was significant work done by the Affordable Housing Committee. We had elected officials represented on that. In December of 2022, we had the recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee to the Growth Management Planning Council. Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House was involved in that work. There was an approval in March of 2023, and ultimately, the King County Council did adopt this in August 2023. The 90-day period starts from when we received a letter notifying us that they actually did adopt this. So we do have until November 30th for council to take action if it so wishes. And with that, I can hand things back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start us off, and then I'll give everybody a chance to comment. I definitely support ratifying this, but I am really conflicted with these CPPs. And I'm talking as an individual council member, not as the representative on the Affordable Housing Committee where I sit with other sound city members. I 100% create, support creating as much affordable housing as we can in our city. And I worked really hard to try to make that possible through helping to create that affordable housing strategy, really supporting all the work that you're doing that you just discussed and the future work that you're doing. But I do not subscribe to aspirational and unattainable goals. I just, that's, I struggle with this. And I think that, you know, countywide, we need to look at how much affordable housing we need. We all, every city needs to contribute for sure. But I look at those numbers, and you're saying that 87% of the 35,000 units that we will build in the next 20 years will require subsidies, which is government cash. And I just don't see where we're going to get that. And so it's frustrating to me to get mired down into something that's somewhat unattainable when we really need to be focusing on what we can do and what is feasible. And so I appreciate the work that we're doing. I think we should be looking at more than just affordable housing. I think we should look at people's wages, people's cost of living, how high that's going up, and everything that we can do to reduce the cost of living in Bellevue and advocate for increased wages for workers. It's just nearly impossible for the people who earn less than $25 an hour to live in Bellevue, and yet we have so many workers here. Fortunately, most people do get paid $25 an hour at least in Bellevue, but there's still so many who don't have that, who want their kids to be in our public schools, want to live in Bellevue, and we need to be able to accommodate that. So there's more going on than just lack of affordable housing. We need to be looking at the whole structure of the system here. But I will, I will support this, and I do appreciate the work that you're doing. And just to kind of put a face on what we're talking about here, I remember when we helped save Highland Village. And here you had, I think, 85 Bellevue School District families at risk of losing their housing. And we found, when we looked at who the people were that were struggling, they were working three jobs. They had two families in a number of units doubled up, just trying to be able to afford to live in Bellevue so that their kids could be going to our schools. And those kids were on the honor roll. Those kids were in the gifted program. This is a very valuable community to our city, and we need to be supporting and making it easier for people to live here. So whatever we can do to do that, and this is not the only way we can do it. Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you, Emile, and Michael, and Tara, who's not here, and Lacy Jane. They were tremendously helpful going through the process, at least for me on the GMPC, and I'm sure for the mayor as well, on the Affordable Housing Council. Mayor, thank you for all your great work on that Affordable Housing Council. I also feel a little conflicted on this. I agree to ratify, but this was not an easy process, and I want to also thank the great King County staff as well, helping us with this process as, you know, it's a priority for them, but affordable housing is, you know, one of Bellevue's highest priorities as well. And, you know, that's really evident in what we've done previously. You know, the great work we did with that, or not me, because I wasn't on the council yet, but Councilman Stokes and Mayor Robinson, et cetera, for the Affordable Housing Strategy for Bellevue in 2017, and the fact we're going to hit that target well before, you know, 2027. And I'm glad you mentioned all the great work, Emile, that we've done to date, including all those great Next Right Work actions that we're looking to take as well in terms of removing barriers to microapartments, reducing permit fees for affordable housing projects, looking at the higher floor area ratio or density to encourage more residential versus commercial development, encouraging DADUs and simplify the permitting process, expediting permitting for affordable housing. We are doing a lot of great things here. I, you know, I know other cities are doing great things as well, but I would say we're, you know, near the top in terms of what we're doing. Made it a priority, and I don't think that we get nearly enough credit for the amount of housing that we are creating in the city. And we all agree that there's still a lot of work to do, obviously. But, you know, it's, and it's not just Bellevue, but it's other cities that are committed to this as well. In fact, like many cities, we're not maybe doing enough in that zero to 30% AMI category, which is, has a lot of challenges, as the mayor mentioned. You know, we were presented at the GMPC, three different options. I thought option two was a better option than option three, but option three was the one that was put forward, because in my mind, it had some significant issues that I just wanted to raise here for everyone's, you know, for transparency purposes. And again, as the mayor mentioned, it required 85% of Bellevue's, excuse me, of Bellevue's 2019-2044 housing target of 35,000 units to be affordable below 80% AMI. And most of this would need to be in that zero to 30% AMI. And below 30% AMI units are typically entirely subsidized, as you know. So the City of Bellevue would likely be required on the order of $9 billion to fund that. I mean, that's well out of our reach. And Emile, I appreciate you put up the percentages of each category that cities are going to be responsible for. But if you look at the actual number of units versus the percentages, it's, it is so drastic. No other city in King County is taking on a bigger percentage here. Now, you're absolutely right in terms of this is about needs. This is not targets, this is needs. And Michael, thank you so much for clarifying that at the very beginning here. I think that's really, really important, and there is that need. So, you know, again, what was troublesome to me was the baseline units are added, and I think this is an important thing to recognize too, are added to the net change to get to the total future housing supply, right? So Bellevue ends up requiring more steeper affordability by percentage than other cities. So as an example, the total future supply of zero to 30% AMI units for each of the cities and the county average target, their target is 12.9%. Our target is over 20%. So that's going to be very difficult, as the mayor said about, you know, these aspirational goal, I mean, it's going to be very difficult to get to that and maintain that, even if we had unlimited funds. So, you know, again, we all acknowledge the significant need of that zero to 30, zero to 30 and the 30 to 50 AMI levels, but the allocations for Bellevue, I think, were unreasonably high. Over half of Bellevue's 35,000 total new housing units by 2044 would be in that, in that range, as described. And I would like to have seen a little bit more of a equitable distribution across all cities in terms of, across all those different categories. I think that was one of our goals. I'm not really sure we quite achieved it. But, you know, more realistic goal setting would have been, would have been great from my perspective. So, because certainly we're working with other cities, and I think Bellevue, and this is where staff was so important, and did such a tremendous job and effective in clarifying that the CPP policy language, that these affordable housing again reflect an allocation of need and not a target. We are, you know, we want to create as many affordable housing units across all these different categories as possible, but to think that we can create this many, especially in the zero to 30%, is just not, it's just not reasonable. It's not possible. We would all like it to be, but there's just no way, unless, you know, unless the city manager found $9 billion somewhere that he hasn't told us about yet. But anyway, so, so yes, again, I'm in favor of moving this forward and ratifying. You know, I wish it was more attainable goals, not just for us, but for the whole region, because each city has something that they probably like to see tweaked. But, but again, I really, at the end of the day here, I really want to also just acknowledge the great work by staff, because we wouldn't have been able to have that amount of influence without your constant diligence and knowledge of the process and of the code here. So, thank you.
As you have heard from the mayor and deputy mayor, you know, you guys have tough job to do, and I want to compliment you. The job is tough, because it's hard to really figure out. I think, you know, we all have a different, how would I put, depths of understanding of all this thing, because you guys are working on it. You guys come up with the best you have, but then there's a lot of assumptions, a lot of different goals that's set by people, by the state, by the county, by others, and there are different situations for each different city. And, you know, Bellevue's a very attractive city, everywhere on the move here. Some cities, people don't want to go there. So I don't know how they set the parameters, how they set the criteria. Being honest with you, you know, I have not been as close with the housing as, you know, the mayor, deputy mayor, they've been having to work on it, and I don't have the assignment to work on it, so I've got other things to do. So, I mean, I think I represent, and also I realize what the public thinks. The public would have even less understanding, you know, of what all these goals are set and all this. And I've heard, you know, goals are important, but how are they set? Are they set to be realistic, to reflect what, number one, that we need to take responsibility for, two, that we can do it or not, right? And whether to do it or not depends on how much, does the public support us, how much they understand it. And all this is difficult, challenging. So I, so we are making decisions with all these challenges and questions still among us. Decision we make to the, I mean, at best, is something that we make the best judgment we have, and it could all be all over the place. So I agree that we all agree that this is a noble, worthy cause, having housing for people who need housing. But there's so many different elements, which I don't know, most people don't understand. So I, so I would support, definitely. This is an important issue, we need to move forward. But when we start really allocating, taking on the responsibility, and how much money do we have realistically to do that? You know, whether, I like the mayor mentioned, just the word aspirational. We all want to be aspirational, but there's practical limitation consideration, you know, and that's going to, not just the financial impact, but impacting our community as a whole and the people who live here as a whole, and the future people who are coming here. So I can speak on that. So I hope we understand that, I hope the whole council understands that. So when we make those decisions eventually, you know, there's understanding of some real good dialogue and discussion and much better education for all of us. So when we talk about it, we actually are intelligent in our conversation. Otherwise, we say, gee, you know, you're way behind us, you're way ahead of us, we're not going to be on the same page. You know, you cannot do things many, many, many more. We got to understand what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the information. I really appreciate the graphs and the comparisons and seeing what the current inventory is of the zero to 30 and the 30 to 50%. I mean, I agree with my colleagues that these are really high numbers that we're aspiring to try to meet, and we all know, and we've been talking about for several years, the need for more affordable housing stock and to look at making sure that we have equitable distribution around the county. So I do support bringing this back. I guess some things, though, that I was thinking about as I've been reading the packet is that, you know, we're looking at the whole system, and we have these numbers, but the level of investment that it's going to take for us to get there, as my colleagues have already talked about. When I look at Table H, and it talks about, here are the different strategies that we can look at. We can streamline all day long, and we can work with development partners, and, but the city itself, we don't own much land, and there's only so much funding that we have available, even with our 1590, that only brings in 10, 11 million dollars a year. So I am also scratching my head, trying to figure out, you know, short of a huge influx of funds from state or federal level, which, none of which I'm really seeing that we've been able to be competitive at or that there's a pool for, where are those investments going to come from? Because there's just one line that, in the strategy table, that says, we should increase our financial contributions. Well, Well, I don't think that there's nearly enough money in our seat cushions for this. So I, I would like to better understand with this adoption, what are the things we're going to be talking about as a region and advocacy, you know, genocy with our alleged policies for how we're actually going to try to move forward in any way, shape, or form? Because otherwise, we could say we're going to move with urgency, we're going to look at this, we're going to have annual reports. But we're going to think, find ourselves really frustrated with the fact that the hill is so steep that we will be making very little progress without a huge influx of partners or, or funding. So, anyway, I, I don't have the answer, but it doesn't seem like the, the information presented came with very many answers either.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Go ahead, let, go ahead, and then you, I'll go last.
Anyway, I agree with a lot of what's been said. And I think that this council and this city should be really proud of the work that we have all done together to increase housing, to increase affordable housing in our city. The numbers that the county has given us do not reflect Bellevue's need. They reflect the county's need, and they are, are taking that need and trying to push a lot of it on the east side. I'd be very curious to see that bar chart with every city in it, because the east side is getting slaughtered on this. We have done a lot and will continue to do a lot to increase affordable housing in Bellevue and to meet the needs of our, of our people. I would note that if the thirty percent is fifteen thousand and below income, a full-time worker just making minimum wage makes almost thirty-three thousand. So what they're talking about is taking fifty-two percent of all future housing units in Bellevue and setting, and having them built and set aside for people that don't work. I don't know that that's really realistic, given the, the cost of land in Bellevue. It, and it does not come even, it's two, almost three times higher than the need, not even counting the sixty-seven hundred emergency housing units that they are allocating to us, than we have for the zero to thirty percent. And as my colleague said, you know, where are we going to find the ten billion, nine billion dollars? I don't know if that counted, the emergency housing, that's another two or three billion. We don't have it. And it's really easy for King County to say, increase funding. We don't have it. We are definitely working with our partners, we are putting our money where our mouth is. The private sector will never build zero to sixty percent. And so, which is the vast, vast majority of the, of the housing units that they're allocating to us. Unlike my colleagues, however, I don't support ratification. I think that these targets are so unrealistic that if we ratified it, it says, we agree. They are misleading to the public, they lack transparency. It's really performative, not realistic. And I don't think that we should ratify. In fact, I would rather make sure that all the cities of King County are aware of what they're buying when they ratify and encourage all of the cities to reject. I've read the, the resolution from the Growth Board or the Growth Management Planning Council. It isn't just a goal. Yes, they can't take away funding from us if we don't reach it. But we are required to plan and accommodate. We are required, we, we will be judged on whether we are reasonably, whether our comp plan is reasonably to be expected to support and enable the production or preservation of units needed at each affordability level. That's a quote from that. So if we are judged on that, what can happen? We can build the most beautiful comp plan language, but we could have our comp plan rejected by the county. We could have our comp plan or our land use code challenged to the Growth Board after it's adopted. And then we have to defend ourselves from not planning to meet a goal that is impossible. I would like every member of this community to make a million dollars a year. So let's pass a resolution and do it, right? I mean, this, this is the ludicrous, the ludicrousness of this. It is, just doesn't work. And so, you know, I can't see ratifying something that we know is not just unrealistic, but impossibly so. I think it sends the wrong message. It requires us to try to tie ourselves in pretzels and still not even come close. It assumes that the next, you know, ten years of budget is going to go only to build affordable housing, which we're not going to do. I mean, it, it's, it's just absurd. Absurd is probably the best language for this. And, and I don't want to put the city in the position where our land use code and our comp plan can be challenged because we can't do the impossible. And I would like to see many of the cities that are getting unfairly allocated, that don't, not consistent with those cities' needs like Bellevue, to push back on the county. I, I am so grateful for the mayor and deputy mayor, their work. I know that what the county wanted to impose upon us was so much worse than this. But like I said, this is, this is absurd, and I will not vote to ratify. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
So, tell us the, the timeline again and what we have to do and when.
We have until November thirtieth. So the council, under the interlocal agreement, there are three possible actions. One is to take action to ratify. One is to take action to disapprove or not ratify. And the third is to take no action. And in that last circumstance, that's deemed ratification.
I guess I'm, I'm struggling with both the, well, the way it's been presented, the way we've been talking about it, and it's, it's, it's a lot more complex than I think anybody thought it was when we were looking at it. It, it's difficult to come to any kind of a decision. And I think we, it's accurate that we really want to do as much as we can.
It is kind of like a parable.
Yeah.
It really is.
And I, I think, I disagree to some extent with some of my colleagues in terms of how far we go and how, how much, how inspirational you can be and all that. That's something we can talk about. And the other thing that's really puzzling is this, is it sounds like we could sign on this thing and not do anything, basically, when it comes down to it. This, this, it's a real, kind of, I think, full of kind of some holes in the whole thing. But I think overall, it, it also is something that we all need a kick in the pants on. And it's so easy to do exactly what we're all doing, is, well, we really like this and everything else, but we don't think we can get to it in whatever we do, and it's not working or whatever. And we, it, it's, I think that's what's frustrating is, I mean, I probably would go further than anybody else here on, on doing something that is aspirational and trying to act, actually deal with and make something difference in the, in this, in the situation. We all have our different looks on it. And I, I don't agree that it's as awful as it's been portrayed. I don't think it's as good as it's been portrayed, portrayed. So I just, I, I'm not, it's just difficult to make a decision on it. And I think sometimes, and I'm not sure all the things that are, that are laid out or have been talked about are really thoroughly, if you thoroughly vet them, they're actually correct. So it's, it's, it's a difficult decision to make because we're making it on probably all, about seven different views of what's being said and what's real.
You know what, I'm, I'm going to stop you there. I, I take umbrage to, to that because you're characterizing it as if this is not based on fact that the staff has presented us with the needs of the city as an individual city and as a county. And this is one policy way to try to work toward the goal of creating enough affordable housing. I'll be with you in just a moment.
Okay, Lynn.
Councilmember. So, yeah.
Well, okay, I, I like Lynn said exactly what I hope somebody would say, is exactly what it is. And that's what I was trying to get to. And the problem is, that's the simple part. It's an aspirational thing and it sets goals out, and it doesn't, it, it's very, seems washy, wishy-washy in what it can actually do on it. I, I just, I think actually it's, 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 it's something we need, it's a kick in the rear to get us really going. But it seems to have a lot of complications to it, and that's the problem. And we're all going to have to do a lot more than we're doing now. And it sounds to me that it's something that sets out a lot of things, and I'm not sure what they can do to make people do these things either. So it's, it's a difficult one to make a decision on. But I agree with what she said. I think that's the, the, that's the, the, the main point of all of it. We have to get out of this, well, we knew, know we need to do this, but we can't because of these reasons or it's kind of hard, or maybe this is the wrong, how did they come up with these numbers and everything else? And we end up ten years from now, we kind of like we did ten years ago and ten years ago. So that's, that's the problem. It is a strange one. I think we, we need to do more work on this before we make a decision.
Okay, Councilmember Barxell.
Thank you, Mayor. I support ratifying it. I think one thing to keep in mind, as, as everyone has alluded to, is that, so you're building zero to thirty is a challenge. And unless there is something like aspirational goals to get us beyond the current thinking, I think it will continue to be a challenge that, in some ways, we will continue to kick the can down the road. I think what having an aspirational goal allows us to do is to think about what are the strategies for finding the funding and accommodating it as, as it was stated. I, I think also it's important to keep in mind that there are people behind these needs. So as I remember, if I remember correctly, the Affordable Housing Strategy was, the target was set based on what tools, what, what, what would be possible based on the tools available instead of the need. And I think prioritizing the need and then figuring out how to meet that need is a, is a much more effective approach to figuring out how we're going to address this, this problem in our community. And, and, and look, we're, we're a city and a region. We're, I mean, this is not an isolated issue, and I think it's important to consider the regional context in addition to the local context, so, and so I support it.
Okay. Why don't you make a motion, Deputy Mayor?
All right, I can do that. I move to direct staff to prepare legislation ratifying House-related amendments to the twenty twenty-one King County countywide planning policies for consideration at a future meeting on consent. We allow questions after that, say.
I just, I do want to thank council for this conversation. It's been a very good discussion, very enlightening. I will give anybody a chance to add, so we'll start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the scenario that Councilmember Robertson brought up, could you speak to that? Because I don't think you had a chance to address that. I, I want to know, could the city be held liable in any ways if we were not able to hit these aspirational numbers? Because as we've just discussed, this is really about needs, it's not targets. But is there still a way that that scenario could come to fruition?
Great question, and I appreciate that being asked. I think we're still working to figure all of that out, exactly what that might mean. But I can give you our, our best understanding of it at this point. Because of the way that the countywide planning policies are written and it's consistent with the state law, there doesn't seem to be any teeth in what the countywide policies can or cannot do. They can make suggestions and recommendations. Then I think, as Councilmember Robertson had mentioned, the only avenue that, that we can see at this point is they could appeal our plan. Let's say if they don't feel like we're adequately planning for and accommodating, anyone could appeal our plan to the Growth Hearings Board. But there isn't any, any other carrot or stick that they can use at this point. Unlike the Puget Sound Regional Council that controls the transportation dollars. If they don't, excuse me, if they don't approve our, our transportation element, then they can make us ineligible for, for transportation dollars. I don't see a similar situation with the county.
Okay, so you're, so you're confident that scenario could not come to fruition, that's what I'm hearing?
Other than an appeal, right. Which, again, anyone could appeal that. And to be perfectly candid, any city that's facing this could, is facing the same situation.
Sure.
Ours is not the only number that is out of range.
Do you feel like you need some additional time to vet that and to ensure that that's the case, that the city is on, I guess, strong ground here? That that won't, that won't happen? Or do you feel at this point, we're okay to ratify?
We can spend some more time looking into that. I would say this evening, the direction we're asking for from the council doesn't actually ratify it. So we could have an answer to that before it came back to you for, for the actual ratification vote.
That's helpful. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thanks. I support and agree with Councilmember Robertson. And after listening her statements, because I believe that if it's not realistic, it's something that is not going to, you know, realistically get the people's support, not just even the support, but the ability to support these things. It's so aspirational, it's likely not possible. So if we do that, and, you know, the people who are going to be, and, and the city continues to have a plan because we approved it, right? I mean, okay, and people are going to say, wow, gee, I'm not going to be able to put up with this because it costs money to do it. And it's going to cost me tax money to do it. And to move toward that, you know, the bottom line is, people can walk. They're going to say, I cannot afford this, I don't want to provide money for a unrealistic. You know, the aspiration thing is, if it's come from the community, they all support it. And right on in blood, the, the bottom line, we will go with this. It isn't, it's our aspiration individually, even on this panel, which we have different, different, you know, realities to what is aspiration. I like to be aspirational, but there's limitation, okay? And that's what we're looking at. Second, there are priorities we have, we have many other things to do besides doing what the planning, trying to do something that may be impossible. I'm not even saying it is impossible, I just, you know, dial down a bit. We cannot ignore other things. Why? We, our job is to make sure we provide a government, a city, an institution that can provide city citizens on all different ways that we can live here. We attract people to come here, continue. The solution to this, which is really, the bottom line is, if nobody wants to live here, everybody wants to leave, we will not have any housing problems. But I believe what we do as governing, governing body for Bellevue, we want people to come here. We want to do everything to attract people to come here. So this is inherent challenge and a problem, but it's a good problem, it's a good challenge. We need to provide a balance, that's the key. That's our job, our job is to provide balance. And I think what we're proposing, being realistic, being given other ideas, that's realistic. That's the responsibility of we, as the council members, as a city. So I would support Jennifer's position to.
I'll go to Councilmember Zahn and then Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, you know, thank you for providing the clarity that as you go back, you're going to confirm what is the consequences and what does aspirational goals really mean? Because as I'm listening to my colleagues, I think where I'm really struggling a little bit with is, I believe that in here, it said that this work was started eighteen months ago. So there's been discussions and representation to, of the development of the policies and the allocations. And so I, I'm struggling at this point with us saying, oh, we didn't agree with the approach. And so if we were trying to steer someplace differently, I'm struggling with why, when we're here being asked to ratify something that was developed over a period of time, that we're now re-discussing the, the whole framework and, and criteria. So I.
Maybe you can speak to the, the words that Deputy Mayor and I did to bring it to this point.
Yeah.
What we started with.
Yes, I'd be happy to, and Emile could fill out, fill in anything that I miss on that. This was, as we mentioned, this came out of the twenty twenty-one update to the countywide planning policies, acknowledging at that time that House Bill twelve twenty had. acknowledging at that time that House Bill 1220 had passed, but it wasn't included in those updates. So the direction was for the Affordable Housing Committee that the mayor sits on to, to figure out how to incorporate that into the countywide planning policies. There was a lot of work that was done and I wasn't here for all of that. The mayor and, and Emile can speak more to that. But there was a lot of work done, looking at different methodologies of how that need would be allocated to all the different jurisdictions in the county. The, the staff and the elected officials, the mayor and deputy mayor in particular, we raised a lot of concerns and questions about the methodology that was ultimately chosen. There were three options. We felt that it wasn't the best option and we lobbied for change. We worked with other cities to try to get some changes. We were not able to get them to use a different methodology. But there were changes made to the policy language itself and to the, the narrative that goes with those that I think the mayor was working on through the Affordable Housing Committee. It was part of the recommendation that went forward to the Growth Management Planning Council that the deputy mayor sits on. So there was a lot of work that went into getting us to this point. We, we wish we had been more successful in getting some, some changes to the methodology to come up with a number that we felt was, was more in line with something that could be achieved. But we were not successful to that degree. But we were successful in at least taking a lot of the language out that made it look as more of a requirement.
It was, came out, it was initially more of a mandate.
Yeah.
And now it's more of a goal.
Right, and, and you feel comfortable that the way that the wording is phrased, it is a goal?
The language is very specific and that was some of the language that was changed. And there's actually narrative in there that recognizes that cities do not have the, the resources or the capabilities to produce the zero to thirty AMI in particular, actually I think it's zero to fifty AMI in particular. Is there anything you want to add to this, Emile?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay, so it sounds like the, the concerns we're bringing up is actually covered in the language that our mayor and deputy mayor were successfully able to advocate to get changed?
We believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. I wasn't actually going to speak again, but I guess I will. So no, and I appreciate staff and deputy mayor and mayor's work on taking something that was, you know, a hundred times worse than this and amending it so it's just merely horrible and impossible. Rather than, you know, that's the, that's the level that it's at now, but it was way worse before. But that doesn't mean I can still support ratifying it because I think that it misleads the public and it misleads, it gives the wrong policy direction to our staff. And it, it's just, it misleads everyone if we agree to these numbers when they are impossible. So I, I'm still a no vote and I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I think, I, I think we're on the path to goal on this. It, it is, it's a very complex thing and it's unfortunate it's in this route, but I think
I think what we, I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard what I said, probably didn't matter. This is a tough issue and sometimes you run into these things. I mean, people who do this all the time and legislators and everything else, I mean, we go, they go through all kinds of iterations and things. And we're, unfortunately, we haven't had much time to talk about this before having to, to make this decision, but we still have some room on it. And I think overall, though, we have to shift our viewpoint in terms of being aspirational and taking this really seriously and knowing that this is an important thing. And, but it sounds to me like we could, we could go along with this without any real danger of this being something that would be totally unacceptable to us. And it, it, it may, and sometimes these things, even though you don't agree with all that, you, you need to be in the game. And if it goes through, it's going to go through, we need to be there. And it's better to be working in it rather than sitting on the outside making complaints or whatever that is still going to be ignored. I, I think Bellevue can have a great effect on it if we come up, if we work on a strategy that really takes advantage of the very positive parts of this and the aspirational, we have to get, get in our heads, we need to do something about this because otherwise it's just going to haunt us forever. At the same, at the same time, do what we can to get changes and, and to make it better and work on it. I just don't think it's going to make us do something we won't, won't want to do. But I think it gives us an opportunity to have conversations and to take action to actually change things and get things done. So I'm okay to go along with it.
Anything more to add?
No further comments.
Councilmember Barxale, I'm just going to reiterate my point that I don't think this, this is the end-all approach to creating housing for our community and for the region. I hope we look at everything and not just this program here because I think there's a whole lot more to it than just this. You have one last.
I did, just to be clear on process going forward, so you can bring this back to us. You said you would like some additional time to look in this too, a little bit, a little bit further. So would we have an opportunity then to discuss this one last time before we take a last vote on ratification?
If, yes, if, if the council would like to do that, we can bring it back to you on, under ordinances and resolutions.
Okay.
Rather than on, on consent.
Okay, very good.
So we have a motion as second, I believe.
Correct.
Yes.
To just ask staff to prepare the resolution and then they can bring it back, as I said.
I believe the motion included coming back on consent, so if you wanted to change.
Oh, is that, oh, you're right, it does.
On consent.
So let's, let's amend that.
Amended to remove on consent?
Yeah, could somebody-
Second amendment.
Well, I don't think you made the motion, so.
I made it second and I go along with that. Right.
I could withdraw it and then reread without.
Why don't you do that?
Okay, so I withdrew, withdraw that motion. New motion is I move to direct staff to prepare legislation ratifying House-related amendments to the 2021 King County countywide planning policies for consideration at a future meeting.
Second.
To be brought back on.
To be brought back as an, under, under ordinance.
Under ordinances and resolutions, okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
No.
So we have two, five? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. And again, I appreciate the, the thoughtful discussion. And with, oh, hold on. There's, I've got something I got to say. What, what did you want to say?
I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Two things. On our, in our packet, we have Intergovernmental Affairs Report written by Mrs. Genesee Atkins. And it's a very good read, so I recommend that you all look at that. And if you have any comments or questions, please let her know. And we will not be having a meeting on October second, so our next meeting will be October ninth. And with that, we are adjourned.